Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen Candidates Forum, brought to you by Abington Cable Access and Media and Abington News. I'm Rick Collins, editor of Abington News, and I'm joined by the three candidates running for the Abington Board of Selectmen, and they are, in alphabetical order, Tim Chapin, Alex Haggerty, and Chris Hendrickson. Before we start, a quick note: so much of our civic focus can be reserved for federal and state elections, but our local elections have just as much impact on our everyday lives. It's local officials who are in charge of our schools, police, fire, library, public health, the senior center, roads and bridges, our parks and athletic fields, business licensing, and that's not the complete list. Voting in local elections and attending town meeting is very important. Please make sure your voice is heard and opinion is known. Town elections are this Saturday, April 24th, and town meeting is May 24th. We're now going to give each candidate a minute for an opening statement. The speaking order was determined earlier by pulling names out of a jargon. Up first is Chris Hendrickson.
Thank you. I would just like to start by telling people a little bit about myself. I've been an Abington homeowner for 27 years. I'm married, I have one adult child, and she attended Abington Public Schools, and she's also a homeowner in Abington. I've been serving on the Board of Sewer Commissioners for seven years. I have a 25-year-plus professional career in human resources management, and I also own some small businesses in Abington, not all at the same time, but in the areas of human resources consulting, HVAC, property management, and retail. And that's a bit about myself.
Great. Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you.
Up next is Tim Chapin.
Thank you, Rick, and thank you to Abington Can for broadcasting tonight and giving the residents the opportunity to go to the polls this Saturday with the information needed to make an informed decision on how to best cast their vote. Just by way of introduction, my name is Tim Chapin. I was born and raised in Abington, and have been a lifelong resident. I am married to my beautiful wife, Megan, and we are raising our four young children in this wonderful town. I was raised with a strong sense of community, and I look forward to raising my own children with that same value here in Abington. What I hope to accomplish tonight is two things: one, summarize what I brought to the Board of Selectmen over the past three years, and two, give a clear and concise group of priorities with specific actions on how to accomplish them over the next three years. I urge the residents of Abington to listen to all three candidates tonight and decide whose specific vision and priorities duplicate their own.
Thank you very much, Tim. Alex, you're up.
Hello, I'm Alex Haggerty, Vice Chairman of the Abington Board of Health and Chairman of the Abington Capital Planning Committee. If given the opportunity to serve as your next selectman, I will work to ensure that our government is being fiscally responsible with the people's money, making sure we're keeping our commitment to our senior citizens for more affordable senior housing and senior programs, making sure we're supporting our fire, our police, and all of our first responders with the funding that they need to keep our neighborhoods safe, and fueling our local businesses with economic recovery programs so we can come out of this COVID-19 pandemic stronger than ever before, and above all, keep transparency and continue to serve with open communication. I'm a proven leader for Abington, and I humbly ask for one of your two votes this April 24th for Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Alex. Question number one: A position like the Board of Selectmen can be a thankless role. It's unpaid, it will take several hours of your time every month, the budget is never big enough, taxes are never low enough, when something goes wrong, it's always your fault, and even if the Board has no oversight on the matter, and sometimes the only time people seek you out is when they have a complaint. So to start this off on a positive note, why do you want to be on the Board of Selectmen? And we're going to start with Alex.
Well, thank you, Rick, for this question. So I've been serving on the Board of Health since 2018, dealing with trash pickup, dealing with different regulations, and then even so, working with the COVID-19 pandemic and trying to keep people safe. I think moving forward, COVID-19 in 2020 was an extremely difficult year for our town, and I know that with my passion, my drive, and my energy, because we're going to need a strong leadership moving forward to make sure that the town prospers.
All right. Thank you, Alex. Chris, you're up next. Have a good day.
Thank you. Well, I have a lot of experience working in a thankless job. I was in human resources for over 25 years. So when things are going well, you really didn't hear much from the employees, and when things didn't go well, even the minor things, that's when you hear from them. So I think there's a lot of similarity in that respect. In terms of time-wise, I'm semi-retired at this point in my life, and I feel like I can make a really good commitment to put the time in that's necessary.
Okay. Tim, you're currently a selectman. Why do you want to seek reelection to the Board?
Well, for the same reason I ran in the first place, and you actually articulated it great during your opening statement on how important local government is. And I want nothing more than to raise my kids in the community that I was raised in. I know firsthand how great Abington can be and how it really is one town, one family. So I want to make sure that my kids get the same thing. I think I bring the knowledge and experience from my private life into public office, so I think I can really make a difference for my children's future.
Great. Thank you. Question two: Abington is starting its process to hire a new police chief. In accordance with the town charter, the town is hiring an outside panel to review candidates. It then makes a recommendation to the town manager, who ultimately will make the hire for Abington's next police chief. Although the Board won't be directly involved in that hiring, it can offer opinions and suggestions. What advice and counsel would you give the town manager when it's time to hire the next Abington Chief of Police? Chris, we'll start with you.
Again, I'm going to go back to my experience in human resources. I think first and foremost, we want to hire the best qualified candidate. I hope that there will be internal and external applicants that will be very well reviewed by the town manager. Again, with my previous experience, you can call me at any point in time or any of us to evaluate those, and again, just want to emphasize the best qualified.
Okay. Thank you. Tim?
So like you mentioned before, that the town manager is the appointing authority there. That said, Scott's done an amazing job about keeping us in the loop on what's going on and really asking our advice, because he knows we're directly tied to the residents. So he wants to know what the residents think, and he gets that through us. So the one advice I would give him is not to limit the search in any way, to really get as many qualified candidates in the same room, much like the search committee did for town manager. They came up to us with three amazing candidates, and I would like to see the same quality candidates brought forth on the police chief.
Great. Thank you. Our next question's about parks and fields. I'm sorry, did you?
I didn't answer that one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm totally sorry, Alex.
Yeah, no, I think experience is definitely going to matter for the next police chief. And I believe that within the department and even outside of the department, to definitely look for the search, the best qualified candidate. But I also think moving forward, there has been issues with morale and also turnover rates at the police department, so I believe that it's Scott's ultimate decision to appoint a new police chief. I firmly believe that the input of the officers themselves moving forward to make sure that in selecting the police chief. I'm not saying that the officers pick who the police chief is, but I think it's valuable input, and it will only make the new police chief more successful.
Great. Sorry about that. I'll let you answer the next question first. A couple of these questions did come from members of the community. We had solicited ideas for questions, and we do have a couple from the community, and this is one of them. The question came, "Most of the town's parks and athletic fields are in need of some work, whether it's improved drainage, new grass, updated backstops and dugouts, repaired retaining walls, et cetera, but as of now, parks and fields aren't included in the five-year capital plan, at least the one that I've seen. And DPW is already understaffed as it is. So what are your thoughts on the condition of the town's recreational spaces, and what can be done about it?" I'll start with you, Alex.
Well, thank you, Rick. So yes, as Chairman of the Abington Capital Planning Committee, this was definitely a very difficult year. The revenues coming into the town just weren't there, so there are a lot of projects fixing different fields and adding in addition to Eager Beaver, so we can extend the program and grow it. Unfortunately, we don't have the revenue for it this year, but I think moving down the line, when our economy starts to really open up again, we will have the funds for that, especially from free cash. So I am looking forward to reopening our economy in Abington.
Okay. Thank you. Tim?
So it was actually Alex Bezanson who came up with the idea years ago, and it's kind of fallen by the wayside. I'd like to bring it back up, but the idea basically was to, right now, to get a complete inventory of what exactly we need, just to go from zero to where we need to be and where we want to see. And then we can get quotes, know exactly how much money we need, and then devise a plan from there, whether it's CPA funding is huge into that. We can do a lot of that if we can bond some of it and really get it all done at once, so we're not just constantly playing catch-up. By the time Plymouth Street's done, maybe Arnold Park is in need, and then Plymouth Street's back in need again. It seems like we're always playing catch-up. So if we can, they're in such disrepair now that if we can get them to a start and point, and then really just maintain them better than they have been in the past.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. Chris?
Yes. I've actually heard from some of the constituents in town about the parks and their concerns about the parks. My daughter, who's 29 now, was two when we moved into the town, was a regular player at the Eager Beaver Park, which is all wooden construction and so forth, does definitely need some updating. Perhaps we could start thinking outside of the box, trying to get maybe the community involved, local contractors and local residents, and maybe at least start small with one of them, and then see how that grows until, up until, of course, the town can secure some funds to do a bigger job.
Okay. Thank you very much. Question four: We're going to talk about water for a moment. Last week, the Abington-Rockland Joint Water Works voted to freeze all new approvals until it conducts a supply and demand study, and we've seen regular summertime water bans, might have a moratorium down the road. There's some ongoing improvements to improve water quality, and the Water Works is technically a legally separate entity from the town of Abington, and the Board of Selectmen doesn't have direct oversight over the water commissioners. But do you still think there's a way the Board of Selectmen should be working with the Water Works to help improve the water situation for the town? And I'm going to start with Chris.
Yes. Actually, we're talking both the quality and the quantity?
Yes.
Okay. Actually, thank you for your article this past weekend. That's when I learned about the freeze, not quite a moratorium at this point in time. So obviously, we need to more closely follow that. It says it's going to be a three-to-six-month review period to see what the situation is, understanding the factors behind it. In terms of the quality of the water, I received as a resident my letter a couple of weeks ago, and I think I, again, received it on the weekend, and that Monday, I made an appointment to meet with Crystal Cameron, the Assistant Superintendent, and met with her for about an hour to get a feel for what is going on, what are they doing about it, what are the future plans, and I was very encouraged and very impressed by their plan of action. So in terms of the Selectmen getting involved, I just said, "I'm running for Selectmen, and I want to get a handle on what's going on here." So I think we can just take an interest and see what we can do to help.
Okay. Thank you. Alex?
I think it's extremely vitally important that as a selectman, I work with the Superintendent of the Abington-Rockland Joint Water Works and keep a communication so we can keep you, the public, informed on what's going on, and you're making sure our water is safe. I do applaud the Abington and Rockland Water Commissioners for putting a freeze on the water while the Joint Water Works does their study. Public safety has to be a number-one priority for our leaders, so I am looking forward to having the conversations with the Joint Water Works, with the Water Commissioners, so we can make sure that our water is safe for Abington.
Okay. Thank you. And Tim?
Thank you for asking this question, because there seems to be some misinformation out there, and I just wanted to clarify that the freeze is a capacity issue that has nothing to do with safety. We're not freezing because of the safety.
Correct.
That was the state lowered their expectation of that chemical that's in there, and we just haven't quite hit that yet, and we're working on getting those filters. Now, I like the Water Works' plan of action to get that done. Unfortunately, I think we're playing a little bit of catch-up on it, that I wish we could have been more proactive. I'm sure there's reasons behind it. As far as the capacity issue, the Board of Selectmen, yes, we don't do the day-to-day Water Works, but you know what we do have is, we have connections in other communities that we can access. You know, when this came up last week, I'm immediately on the phone with people from other communities. We've got ideas, we've got plans that maybe they'll come through, maybe not, obviously nothing to announce yet. I mean, this is still in its infancy, but yeah, we're working on other ways, because the system we're doing now isn't working. We can't rely on Mother Nature to keep refilling our reservoirs, because last summer was real tough, it was a real dry summer. This so far has been a pretty dry spring. We had a decent weekend of rain, so that helped, but I wouldn't rely too much on Mother Nature. We need to be more proactive this year.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. This is another question that was received from a resident in town. The Center School has now been closed for four years, and the North School has been closed to students longer than that. Both buildings are becoming ISOs. A reuse committee made recommendations a couple of years ago, but nothing has really fermented from that. What should happen with these properties, and what's the timeline in which this should happen? We're going to start with you, Tim.
That's a good question. It's a tough one. There are two parts, say, what should happen and what's the timeline. First of all, I do think the town should hold on to these properties right now. We have an acting Affordable Housing Trust and Affordable Housing Committee that really have some good ideas on possibly a public-private partnership, and we want the builders to look at these and say, "Are these buildings usable?" They're probably not. I mean, but I'm certainly no expert in that. If the builder comes and says, "We're not," then we've got to tear them down as soon as possible. The Fire Department's been great about inspecting these buildings periodically, making sure that they are safe. But you're right, they are ISOs as well, so within the next two years, I would certainly say that more concrete decisions have to be made on that.
Thank you. Chris?
Yes. Well, I would agree with the timeline, probably over the next term of the next selectman's term, that we can come up with some concrete ideas in working with the newly established trust as well. Off the top of my head, don't have any development ideas, that's not sort of my bailiwick, but as far as definite need to improve, and I'd say in the next one to three years, hopefully have something more concrete.
Okay. Thank you. And Alex?
So I had a conversation with the Superintendent of Schools, Peter Schaefer, about the stability of those two buildings. We can't use them. They're a safety hazard, so we're going to have to do something with those buildings. With that being said, I would look forward to, if possible, trying to meet the threshold of the state requirements for 40B housing, affordable housing, I should say, and I know there's a great call in our community for more affordable senior housing. So I think Center School or North School, even both, it would be good for that development, definitely worthwhile having that conversation.
Great. Thank you very much. Next question: Let's talk about some taxes and services. The internal struggle is how to provide quality municipal services while keeping property taxes low and limiting the rate of development in a town like Abington. So how does Abington balance all of these competing things? And Alex, we'll start with you.
Sure. I mean, I think definitely we need to focus on lowering the burden on our property taxpayers and all of our Abington taxpayers, and I think we really need to mobilize on the empty properties, empty commercial properties that we have in town, and really start to drum up business, and also establishing some kind of plan moving forward for Union Point. We've had that property for the longest time. We've zoned it for commercial, and I think it would be very, well, it would be very beneficial for the town, looking into millions of dollars' worth of revenue from that commercial property.
Great. Thank you. Chris?
Yes. I agree with Alex. Obviously, bringing in more revenue is going to be key. I wish I had a crystal ball and could tell you what the magical answer is to provide optimal services at lower tax rates. I think I need to, I would like to just, if people believe that their taxpayer monies are being well-spent, then if their perception is that they're getting a fair amount for their money, then hopefully that will balance off what the increases would be versus the services. But again, pulling in revenue, Union Point, and obviously, new factors and new developments as, of course, the water situation could play a factor into developing some of these properties as well. So we need to balance those things looking forward as well.
Okay. Tim?
So the key word there is services. Everybody wants to say, "We need the services," but they don't want their taxes to go up. So what we've been working on is actually adding services without spending more money, and part of that is regionalization. A regionalized planner, for example, is possible in the future. We've petitioned the state for $300,000 to open office with Whitman and Rockland that we can all access a planner for. Another part of that is things like having the head of the finance work as also the head of the Assistant Town Manager. So we're saving over $100,000, but we still have the same amount of services. And this has kind of been going on, and it's going to continue to go on, and I really want to build on that. We've gone regional dispatch now with both fire and police, so that'll give us more police officers on the road, so you're seeing an increase in service and actually savings in money.
Okay. Well, you brought it up, and now it's going to be the next question, Tim. Currently, all 911 calls made in the town's borders through cell phones are handled through the Holbrook Regional Emergency Communications Center, and 911 calls that come in via landlines go directly to the Abington Police Station. And Tim, you recently voted to have the Holbrook Center handle all of the town's 911 dispatch calls. Can you explain why? And the question to the other two would be, do you agree with the decision that the Board made? So, Tim, tell me a little bit about that vote.
Sure. I encourage anybody that wants to know more about this to access the presentation that Deputy Cutter gave us at that meeting, because it really was eye-opening. Should something happen in our schools, I know it's our biggest fear that should there be something along the lines of a school shooting, that our Abington Police Department, with our, you know, maybe 10 officers on duty on an eight-to-four shift, including the administrative, wouldn't be able to handle it. So to have a regionalized dispatch and to be able to have access to the surrounding towns is really, it's a good thing, not to mention the cost savings, which will give us more police officers on the road, which is really where they need them. Right now, calls that come in for fire services will come into the police station, they will transfer them over to Holbrook, who will dispatch the fire, assuming nothing gets struck. It's a difficult thing to sometimes transfer the call, and the person on the old line is having the worst day of their life, and they're hearing clicking noises, and they think you hung up on them, and they hang up, and now you don't have an address or something. So it's really just a streamlined measure of us being able to get our emergency services out to them. That was the deciding factor for me, too.
Okay. Chris?
Yes, I saw the presentation, Tim, at the Selectmen's meeting where Deputy Cutter gave his rationale for doing that, and also following along with Chief Nuttall, who we did the regionalization of dispatch for fire about 10 years ago, and they said that that's gone very well. And in listening to the rationale, I would say, I didn't have any much prior information before that, but in listening to that presentation, I did agree with the vote. I believe it was a 4-1 vote, but if on the Board, hearing that, I would have voted in favor of it.
Great. Thank you. Alex?
Yeah, so I did hear the presentation from Deputy Chief Cutter, and also hearing how the regionalization has been going with our Fire Department from Chief Nuttall, and learning all the factors and everything, and the money saving, and so possibly bringing in more officers, which our town needs, I would have voted in favor of that. I think anything to save the cost of the taxpayers is vitally important to me, but not only that, making sure that our officers are being safe as well, and the best option for them.
Alex, we'll start with you. This one's on housing. Housing is a topic of great interest in Abington. So back in December 2019, the Board of Selectmen approved Abington's Housing Production Plan, which is basically the town's official blueprint for addressing its housing needs. I'm curious if you agree with what was inside of it and what pieces should be prioritized when it comes to housing?
So, yeah, no, I absolutely think we need to be moving forward with 40B affordable housing and making sure we're meeting the state standard when it comes to the threshold. I think it would be good for the town. Not only that, I'm a firm believer in small government, so I firmly believe that if we can meet this threshold, then we're in charge of the projects moving forward, and I think that Abington is better suited to handle these projects than the state would, more on a local level.
Okay. Thank you. Tim?
So, yeah, I do approve. I did vote for that. I'm not going to pretend to be an expert on town planning. That certainly was done by experts, and you could tell it was quality work. I do think we're moving along well. As far as the priorities, we really need to prioritize senior housing. I know it seems cliche, but it's true, and we're really moving forward with the plans now. Hopefully CPA funding will really help us there, and we'll keep petitioning for more money from the state, more money from the federal government, because that's really where it's going to have to come from eventually.
Thank you. And Chris?
Yes. Agree on both counts for affordable housing for Chapter 40B and for our seniors, and I think we do want to, excuse me, we do want to focus on our seniors at this point in time, but I think we can concurrently be reviewing other options as well. So I think we should look at the whole big picture.
All right. Thank you, Chris. We'll start with you on this one. This one's about transparency. What can the Board of Selectmen do better when it comes to transparency throughout town government? Or do you disagree with the premise, and you think the Board is sufficiently transparent?
Well, all of their meetings are televised or open to the public. I say televised because of, they are televised, you can look at them later, but I think I have to say that probably if people aren't getting the information that they need from the Selectmen, it's because they're not tuning in and watching. So I would like to put a little bit back on the residents to do their due diligence and find out what's going on.
Okay. Thank you. Tim?
I'd like to disagree with your premise and say, no, everything we're doing is great, but we can always be better. Recently, I try to post everything on Facebook. I know that gets a lot of action, and I try to, what I need to do better now is, recently we had the, we were deciding on where to hold this upcoming election, and so I put a poll on Facebook. And I think I need to do more of that, because I really got a lot of engagement. So instead of just putting out, "Here's last week's meeting, this is the agenda for next week's meeting," try to actually engage the conversation and move the conversation forward. I think we've leaps and bounds over three years ago on the communication coming out of Town Hall. A lot of that has to do with the new town manager, a lot of that has to do with the Selectmen that have been elected since that time. But we can be better, and I think that's one way we can be better, is to actually engage conversation.
Alex?
Well, thank you, Rick. This is a great question. If there's one thing that Abington residents know about Alex Haggerty, is that I'm a very transparent leader. That was one of the biggest things that I ran on in 2018, running onto the Board of Health. I wanted to make sure we're getting the message from the Health Department out to the people, whether it was different regulations or compost site, or the trash strike. During, when we had the Republic Services trash strike, I was constantly calling Republic Services, constantly working with our Health Director, making sure that Republic Services was keeping their promise, their contracted promise to us to make sure to clean our streets and make sure that our recycling and our trash was being picked up. I even went around to different neighborhoods in trying to make sure if barrels were or were not taken. And I think, and COVID-19 pandemic, we've, us at the Board of Health has really, we've really worked hard to make sure, the COVID-19 was a new thing, and we had to evolve with it, we had to step up to the plate and really keep the public informed, making sure of facial coverings or walking through different stores, and just how to keep people safe, different protocols. So I think there's always room for improvement. I think a more informed Abington is a better Abington. And also, moving forward, if given the privilege to serve as a Selectman, I'm more than happy to have coffee hours, to talk with the residents, see what their issues are, and see how we can be... know, see what their issues are and, you know, and see how we can be, be better serving.
All right, thank you. This will be our final longer form question and we'll go into some shorter ones after this one. If things proceed as planned, Abington could have four marijuana-related operations in the town within the next couple of years. Two would have a retail component, two would have a manufacturing and cultivation component. Do you have concerns about this? Do you have an idea of how you would like to see this managed or how Board of Selectmen oversight would be? I'm just curious your thoughts as to, of this opportunity for, for the town. And we'll start with Alex.
Sure. So I am a addiction awareness advocate, substance awareness advocate. So I mean, I, I want to make sure that we're educating people, make sure everything is safe. But at the same time, after meeting with a couple of these business owners for the marijuana retail establishments, the safety protocols that they're putting in is above and beyond. And I think I, I welcome their business because they're definitely going to bring tremendous revenue for this town and a lot of foot traffic. But, you know, for me, as, you know, a substance awareness advocate, I think education is key and making sure that, you know, people are using it properly.
Thank you, Alex. Chris, we'll go to you.
Yeah, I'd actually like to piggyback on, nice segue, thank you, Alex, into the education program. And not just education for our youth. I think some education programs for our adults and being good role models for our, for our youth in that area. Same being with, you know, alcohol use and so forth. It, you know, it has been approved by the state for many years. It's a thing that's here. It's staying here. Agree with Alex that it's going to produce some revenue. So let's use some of that to, to educate, add some better programs and, you know, educate youth and adults.
Great, thank you. Tim?
So as far as selectman oversight goes, one of the things that, there's certain things we can use the money for that we get, the three, the initial 3% that we get and that's for expenses to the town directly related. One of those things is inspectional services. And also going back to your two previous questions, how do we raise services and keep taxes hopefully the same, you know, certainly no higher. And part of that will be to use some of that money and get an inspectional service department so that, so that they're overseeing it and we know exactly all the inspections throughout the town. We know what the right hand is doing with the left hand. So we don't repeat what happened on North Quincy Street. We got, you know, they have permits from zoning, they have permits from plant, you know, every different board and nobody knows what the L Board's doing. If we can streamline that with the inspectional services department, it will really help. And I think that will keep them, so the Board of Selectmen's not too, doesn't have to worry about them doing the right thing.
Great, thank you. We're going to go to some quick response questions and all I'm looking for is a sentence or two in response. Maybe that's not fair, but this is what we have. So we're going to go with that. We're going to start with, Chris, do you support a new fire station off Glenowitz Way?
I support a new fire station. I have to look into the location of Glenowitz Way. If, I don't know, it appears a lot of work has been done to choose that, that location. So I'd have to say, I think it's fair for me to just say, I support a new fire station in the best place possible. If it happens to be Glenowitz Way, then I will support that.
Alex?
So as chairman of the Abington Capital Planning Committee, I met with the fire station building committee and also the firefighters themselves. After reviewing everything and all the facts, I think it's a worthwhile investment for a new fire station for Abington.
Okay, thank you. Tim?
I 100% support the new fire station and I support it on Glenowitz Way. One thing I would want to see before it is built, I, there needs to be an access road from, from the fire station to Route 18. I do not, I know there's ways they can control the lights and alleviate the traffic. I do not want fire trucks coming out onto that road when school's getting out. So with the caveat that there's an access road from the fire station to Route 18, then yes, I support that location as well.
Okay. I'm going to throw a hypothetical at you. Is there a scenario, Tim, this is for you first, is there a scenario in which you would support a Prop 2.5 operational override?
That, that's tough as a hypothetical. As far as for the operating budget, no. Absolutely not. We need to, we need to be smart in budgeting. The Finance Committee in town has done an amazing job. The town manager, both now and previous, have done a good job. And I see that continuing. So no, not for operational.
Alex?
For operating, operational budget, no.
Okay.
Agreed, agreed.
Agreed. Okay. Let's switch over a little bit. Alex, this is for you first. What's a person, event, book that's inspired you?
Honestly, it has to be my grandfather.
Okay.
Sorry. Vincent Hagerty, my pappy. You know, growing up, he didn't have much and, but he always was committed to his community and to his family. He was an educator over in Weymouth. He was an elementary school principal. Actually, a lot of people in Abington had him as, as a principal. So, you know, I try to use his memory to inspire me to do better things for the community.
Okay, thank you. Tim, how about you?
So a couple. As far, as far as government goes and giving back and civic duty and stuff, I really, I had a history teacher in high school, Steve Anderson. He recently passed away as well, but he, he really, you know, brought me, showed me the Junior Statesman of America program and stuff like that in high school. It really was in the close-up program to trips to Washington DC. It really was inspiring. As far as just, I really got to go with my parents as far as just my upbringing. They've inspired me to bring my children up the same way we were and with service and dedication and a strong sense of community.
Thank you. Chris?
I had a lot of mentors along my professional way, probably too many to mention, but I, I appreciated their taking me under their wing and teaching me things. And to be honest with you, I'm going to give myself some credit. I inspire myself. I am a, I, I pretty much do what, I don't, I'm kind of flubbing here, but I am my own self-motivation. I have to get up in the morning and do what I do to, to get it done and, and I'm, I'm pretty disciplined.
Thank you. Chris, we'll stay with you. What's a place in Abington that brings you happiness?
Brings me happiness? My backyard.
Your backyard?
And running, you know, running the roads of Abington on a good day, on a good, on a good day's run.
Okay, thank you. Tim?
I was going to say my bed, but that's probably not the right answer. Honestly, one of my favorite things to do is, is to go to Dairy Queen and grab some ice cream with the kids and then take it down to Lake Street, walk over the bridge, go to the Island Grove and eat it by the picnic tables over there. The kids love to watch the ducks and the turtles poking their head through and stuff like that. And I love just watching the kids do that. So that's probably my answer.
Thank you. Alex?
Me, and it definitely has to be Ames Knoll. Born, born and raised in Abington and going to Abington High School, I used to be on the cross-country team and that's where our meets were. And I always loved, you know, when we were practicing, running through the pass and running around Cleveland Pond and it's just, and even now, you know, trying to go out running there and it's, it always brings me so much joy to be at Ames Knoll.
Great, thank you. Tim, why did you stay in Abington?
It was never really an option, I guess. I mean, it's, it's my town. I, I really have a lot of family and we've all stayed in Abington for the most part. I have two brothers that lived in Abington when I was raising my family and my sister lives in Abington, my mother lives in Abington, my father, you know, I can't, I can't be too far away. We're, we're a close family and so, Abington's my home.
Great, thank you. Same question for you, Alex. Why do you stay in Abington?
Abington's my home. You know, I've, I've gone through a lot in my life already and, you know, I've, Abington has given me so much support and so much encouragement and really has shaped me into the human being I am today. Not only that, just the sense of community, you know, one town, one family. You know, everybody knows each other and, you know, we are all working together, you know, for a better future, a better Abington together. So that's why I stay.
Great. Chris, same question for you. Why do you settle in Abington?
I settled in Abington, actually, my sister and her husband bought a home in Abington and I started looking in Abington and I found it to be quite a quaint community because I come all the way far from Weymouth. And I've stayed here because, again, it is one town, one family. I feel like there's been so many tragedies in Abington over the course of the last quarter century that I've been here. And I love the way that the community comes together. And my daughter, again, bought, you know, she went to school here in Abington and she bought a home here in Abington. So this is where we're going to raise our grandchildren, I suppose.
Great, thank you very much. We're going to move into closing statements now. Again, just a minute to make a final argument for the voters of Abington. Alex, we're going to start with you.
All right, thank you, Rick, and thank you for Abington CAM, for hosting this forum tonight and also Abington News. So I've been serving Abington in the, as vice chairman of the Abington Board of Health for the last three years, giving my complete and, complete dedication to the town of Abington, making sure that we're being transparent and being fiscally responsible with the Health Department's budget. I will bring that same energy and drive to the Board of Selectmen. And I hope that I can earn one of your two votes for the Board of Selectmen on April 24th. And together we can achieve a better future, a better Abington. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Tim?
First of all, thank you again to you, Rick, and Abington News and Abington CAM for giving us the opportunity today to, to discuss the issues that our town will face over the next three years. I also like to take a moment to thank both Christine and, and Alex Hagerty for volunteering their services to the Board of Selectmen. I know firsthand how difficult it is to put yourself out there and run for public office, but you both done an amazing job. I really wish we could all work together on the Board of Selectmen moving forward. That said, after this Saturday, there will be one true winner and that's the town of Abington. No matter who the residents select to serve on the board, one thing is for sure, they will work hard and do what they feel in their heart is best for the residents of Abington. I hope in the last 45 minutes, I was answered, able to answer most of the questions people may have. But I would like to urge any resident out there that has absolutely anything to, that they would like to know, please reach out. You can find me on Tim Chapin, Abington Selectmen on Facebook, email at tchapin@abingtonmass.gov or call me anytime, 339-788-4134. I've tried and hopefully succeeded in bringing a voice for the residents over the past three years on the Board of Selectmen, God willing and with your blessing and support on Saturday, April 24th, I'll be given the opportunity to do that again.